Good evening, everyone. I'll call the January meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And if you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any, John, any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Not that I'm hearing.
Okay.
Opposed or neutral?
No ceremonies, appointments, presentations, announcements. If anyone wants to speak at the public hearing this evening, you need to fill out a form and turn it in to Kelly up front here. And you need to do that before we start the public hearing. Okay. Declaration of conflict.
I have to declare a conflict of interest due to Copper Basin being a client of the company I work for.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Did you want me to take roll call?
Sure.
Okay. Kimball?
Present.
Carey?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Borders?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present, with the exception of Fred Ostemeyer and Mark Latham, who are excused.
Okay. We'll move to the consent calendar.
I move to approve it as presented.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
I second it.
Roll call, Kelly.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Borders?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Okay. Citizens' comments. Does anyone have any comments for the Commission this evening that's not an agenda item? Don't see any. So I guess we'll move on then. Unfinished old business. See none. John, any old business? Okay. All right. We're at that public hearing, so I guess we'll open the public hearing for the Tullamore PUD amendment for street lighting. John, you want to present?
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Associate Planner here with the City of Post Falls, introducing the Tullamore preliminary PUD amendment, street lighting, file number PA-14-03. The applicant is Copper Basin Construction Incorporated. Both the representative of the company and the applicant is here this evening. The requested action is to modify the original PUD to install all future lights per City Post Falls and KEC, KEC being Kootenay Electric Company, standards and requirements, and for these lights to be owned and maintained by Kootenay Electric. Project location is as you see here on the map, diastric west of Highway 41 and south of Prairie and east of Cecil and north of Pole Line. Project size approximately 232 acres as part of a PUD. It's a mix of residential and commercial. And the street lighting on both public and private roads are to be owned and maintained by the Tullamore Homeowners Association in its current configuration. So what they're asking is for areas outside of pre-existing neighborhoods to be converted to being done by and owned and maintained by Kootenay Electric. Reason for this being considered a major amendment is because it is a thematic change in lighting style from the Acorn style to the Town and Country and our Cobra heads that would be provided by Kootenay Electric at this time. And it is an ownership and maintenance obligation shift from a homeowners association to Kootenay Electric with the rates being paid by the citizens of Post Falls. Before I conclude the introduction, I would like to make a clarification in that staff report. There was a little misrepresentation at times. It said operation and maintenance would be done by the City of Post Falls, and so I tried to make a clarification at the intro. It would be owned and maintained by Kootenay Electric.
Okay.
So now that would conclude the introduction.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We can hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, for the record. It's good to see you guys again, talking about what seems to be our favorite project of lately, Tullamore. I'd like to say this will be the last time I'd be here talking about it, but I don't think it will be. We'll be here again, I'm sure.
You'll have 15 minutes, Drew.
Hopefully, I won't take 15 minutes.
All right.
Streetlights is the topic tonight, as John had said. Here's a map of Tullamore that I have in front of you. All of the various colored lights over here are the existing lights that are, as John had said, the Acorn style. There's two different, actually three different varieties of them out there. There's some short ones, some tall ones, and then with the recent phase that we did down here on Galway Edition, there is a mixed-match Acorn light, which is actually why we're here talking about what to do in the future. So everything that's shaded in gray, and I know that's a little bit hard to see, but everything that's shaded in gray is an existing streetlight. What we're asking for is all of the future lights to be public lights, as would be in any other traditional subdivision. The reason for that is the Acorn light that was picked out as part of the PUD, it's no longer made. It's no longer manufactured. We can't get parts for it. We can't get new ones. When we did that last phase in Galway Edition, we contacted the manufacturer. They said, "No dice." They offered us what was considered to be similar to the Acorn. It doesn't look anything like it. We installed it. It's still hard to get parts for it, hard to maintain it. If somebody backs into one, if there's a problem with them, we can't replace it. That's the biggest issue. Here's what we're looking to replace it with, and these are products offered by Kootenay Electric. And I know Dan from Kootenay Electric's here. If you guys have technical questions about lights, I'm sure he could answer any of that. This is your typical Town and Country light. You see it all over the city of Post Falls. It's mounted on a 20-foot fiberglass pole. It's manufactured by GE. It's 100 watts. They're owned, maintained by Kootenay Electric, as John had said, with the city providing or paying for the O&amp;M costs. This does conform to the city of Post Falls lighting policies. It's the same light that's used throughout the city. Town and Country lights are used on your local access streets, your local residential streets. The second-style light is your Cobra headlight. Those are usually the bigger ones. Those are mounted on a 35-foot galvanized pole. Again, they're manufactured by GE. They come 100 watt or 200 watt, depending on the situation, depending on the classification of the roadway. And again, owned and maintained by Kootenay Electric, paid for by the city. This light also conforms to the Post Falls lighting policy. So back to this plan. You can see we've laid out and actually submitted this to staff and had it reviewed with them where you would see Town and Country lights and where you would see the Cobra headlights. You would see, this is Charleville Road here, the continuation of Charleville. You'd see Cobra headlights on Charleville. You'd see Cobra headlights on Market Street, which would be the heavy commercial street. You'd also see it on Killdeer Lane, as well as Cecil Avenue, is where you'd see the overhead Cobra lights. Inside the residential, you'd see the Town and Country. Inside some of this multifamily and commercial stuff, you'd see the Town and Country light as well. That's what we're here to ask for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you guys have them.
Any questions for Mr. Dittman?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, the staff report.
So the Planning Division looked at this application and found that this would be applicable to all future phases, and it wouldn't change any of the current ownership and obligations of the pre-existing phases. We compared it to the Post Falls Municipal Code for the criteria for approving a PUD as part of 18.20.080. So the first criteria of that is that it provide, is that PUD should provide benefits that would not be achievable through compliance, that would normally be required through zoning and standard regulations. The, that's how this came to be, is the original PUD permitted these Acorn-style lights that would typically be with a standard subdivision, but the request to go to what would typically be put in actually makes it for operation and maintenance, some more assurance for just overall public safety. Second criteria is that it's compatible with surrounding land uses, both existing and future. And as noted, this isn't really a land use matter, but there would be some aesthetic differences in the area. You would have an area that was originally developed that would have one thematic flavor for lighting, and then it would go to what you would typically see throughout the community. But once again, you see safety and the general public's interest with that offsetting the, maybe, potential aesthetic transitions. The other criteria sets, Criteria III and IV, really aren't applicable, and neither is Criteria V within those five elements of that section of Title 18. Engineering commented as regards to transportation is that the appropriate levels of roadway illumination has a significant impact of roadway safety. And they also acknowledge the aesthetic differences and as well acknowledge that the importance should be on the repair, maintenance, and the operation of the lights. Or sanitary sewer and water, obviously not applicable. And the Post Falls Police Department had no issues with the request. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions you may have from staff.
Questions for John?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. I know that they said that they couldn't get the other, the Acorn style anymore, couldn't get parts or anything for those. So would it be required of them in that, in the already-developed portion, that if those lights fail or that they have to put other ones, that they'll put in ones that are, like the newer ones, they're going to put in the new part?
From my understanding is that pre-existing subdivision, that's already, the HOA is already under ownership and has that ownership and obligation for that pre-existing phase. I don't know if either a representative from the HOA or if the applicant wants to comment on that further, but that's from my understanding.
I didn't understand that answer. Do you understand?
Well, in the orig, in the Acorn-style lighting, it was said that you can't get those anymore. They can't get parts for them anymore. So if they start to fail within that, that part of the subdivision, will they have to be replaced with the kind, the new ones that they're now going to use in the rest of the subdivision?
Currently, though, is if there is an issue of getting those replacement parts, that that HOA, as an applicant, would have to request a similar transition of their lighting before staff, and it may be a future amendment request for that phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
I had a question, Lynn.
Okay.
Are the, which, which rights-of-way are not public rights-of-way that we're talking about? Some of the rights-of-way are private rights-of-way?
I might switch to Drew's map, as it was a little bit better of a map. What's that?
And I guess the question would be, is there any reason to distinguish between public rights-of-way and private rights-of-way as far as the city having the responsibility to pay for the lighting?
So all these interior streets within the pre-existing phases are within the public rights-of-way. What this is addressing is the public rights-of-way for all future phases of the Tullamore PUD. It won't address those that are already currently within pre-existing phases. There's no private streets.
Okay.
There's some alleys. There's some private alleys.
In the multifamily areas, there was some discussion about those going in. Would those be on future plats, platted rights-of-way and, you know, not lighting the parking areas, I guess?
The lighting on the, for future multifamily, they would have a site plan review. We would look at site illumination at time of site review outside of public rights-of-way.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other question for staff? All right. We'll take public testimony at this point. Kelly, do we have any signed up to speak in favor of?
Um, yes.
Joseph Porcello. Good evening.
My name is Joe Porcello. I am president of the Tullamore Homeowners Association. I'm also way more conversant with streetlights than I ever thought I would be in my life. First of all, I'd like to say that the Homeowner Association does support this proposal, that the previous lights, the high-pressure sodium lights, were a pretty big expense for us as an HOA. And because of that, last year, we went through a considerable effort and upgraded all of our existing lights to LEDs, which is saving the city a lot of money. You're welcome. And my only question would be to clarify who is going to assume responsibility or what's going to happen to the lights that are surrounding the city park that are on early dawn and along Charleville? Because we are unable to match the previous lights, as was mentioned, and we'd love to have those lights and put them in where the non-matching lights are sitting now, if the city is going to change those to something that they're going to maintain. So I don't know if that's the purview of this body, but I certainly would like it entered in the record anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know the answer to that question. Do you know the answer to that question?
I didn't hear the question.
He would like to know who would be responsible for the lighting around the city park that's in the subdivision, now that we can't get these lights for that area that match.
And that would have to be determined by the council down the road on whether they wanted to accept that responsibility.
Bill Melvin, city engineer. The, you know, streetlights originally became owned and maintained by the homeowners association because they were a non-standard light. The city isn't in the business of owning and maintaining streetlights. Either Kootenay Electric Cooperative or Avista owns and maintains the lights within the city. And so when you have a developer that comes in and wants to put in a decorative light, it's obviously something that Kootenay and Avista doesn't want to keep spare parts for or keep spare light standards for. The city doesn't. So we, in the past, have put them on the homeowners association responsibility, okay? They're your lights. You take care of them. You maintain them. I don't know that's a practice we're going to continue. I could see where if we have some existing lights within the subdivision that, that the homeowners association wants to change out and replace those existing lights with a standard that was, that would now be owned and maintained by Kootenay Electric Cooperative, we might be able to do a transition to there, but that's not the discussion that's up for us this evening. The discussion is moving forward with the other ones. So we're kind of separating what's been done in the past from where we go in the future.
Right.
But I could see a situation where we could have those discussions with the existing association if they wanted to switch all those out and get out of that ownership maintenance obligation in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Anybody that's neutral that wants to speak? Anyone that's opposed that wants to speak? Okay. Louis Barton.
Yeah.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
That's Louis Barton, 3436 Galway Circle in Tullamore.
Okay.
Part of my opposition was that this was originally a part of a whole design scheme for the neighborhood, and currently, by my count, there are about 75 existing lights, and the homeowners association just went through the conversion to LEDs. And as a person who lives there, and I think our homeowners association will agree, the lights that we currently have are much nicer, both stylistically and in terms of illumination, than others. And I was under the original situation when I came here tonight, that all of those lights were going to be replaced, but they can't be replaced with the, as I understand it now, under this. So that was part of my concern, because they are good and they are stylish and a part of the whole environment that we have in Tullamore. What I would point out to the Planning Commission, the city of Post Falls, and our own homeowners association is that the two lights adjoining our property on Pole Line just before Charlieville Road are out and are not working properly for the entire year that I've been here. And if we get the same type of maintenance on all of the other lights under this arrangement, that would be of great concern to me as a homeowner in the area. And what happens with these two lights, the only two lights that are adjoining property, which is on Pole Line between 41 and Charlieville Road, they come on, they go off, they come on, they go off, they stay off, they turn off when a car turns into Charlieville Road. Sometimes they turn off when a car is exiting Charlieville Road. And this has been an ongoing problem for the entire year I've lived in Tullamore. Now, exactly what's going to happen with all of the lights that are currently along Cecil, I don't know, but I'm telling you that this big arc light in these two instances has been not replaced, maintained, serviced, or whatever for this entire year. So my opposition on this is, you know, who's going to be, who can guarantee that these lights are going to be properly maintained? Now that it's in the homeowners association, and we put all LED lights in, they appear to be very solid, very effective, and as I understand the LED technology, and I'm an engineer, by purpose to electrical engineer, many of them are guaranteed for 20 or 40 years, okay, to work. And my own experience with the LEDs in my house, which I redid from Copper Basin with LEDs, I haven't had any problems at all. So if it ain't broken, don't fix it. If we have no choice, because we can't get Acorn lights anymore, then that position is mute. But in selecting what we do have, if they're the same type of thing which is adjoining our property, we should be concerned about that. And I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one more to speak. Mark Yukina. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Yukina, 3349 North Cormac Loop in the Tullamore community.
Okay.
I'm a little confused, because the original notice I received from the city indicated that Columbia Bank was the declarant and not Copper Basin. Is it possible to get some clarification?
Columbia Bank would be the actual owner of the property, with Copper Basin being the applicant on behalf, when we have permissions by Columbia Bank for Copper Basin to apply on their behalf. And Drew is Lake City Engineering. It's the representative of the applicant.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Currently, as, as we've already discussed, Tullamore has thematic lighting. I don't doubt that some of those fixtures are not available anymore, but I don't think we have to settle for Cobra heads or the Town and Country-style light. They're not even close to what we have now. The Cobra heads that are, that were installed recently on Cecil Road are using a high-pressure sodium light, which is a yellow-colored light. It's not nearly as aesthetically pleasing as the LED light that we have in use now, and they're not as energy-efficient as the LEDs. They're not anywhere close to the LEDs on efficiency. Also, the Cobra heads are installed on a heavy steel, galvanized steel pole. They're not aesthetically pleasing at all, where the other fixtures are at least have some architectural interest, that we, the, the existing fixtures, anyway. I'm not in favor of the proposed change. I think it's important for the Tullamore residents to have a voice in what's chosen for the community. If it has to be different, I, I don't like the two choices being presented. In addition, the, the Town and Country light has a fiberglass pole, and those tend to degrade over time. Maybe not in a structural way, but certainly their appearance degrades in the sunlight over a period of several years. So that's, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drew, do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, Drew Dittman. If you would like, Dan Hannenberg from Kootenay Electric's here. He didn't sign up to speak, but I know he can answer some of those questions that were asked as it pertains to LED lights, lights not in service, and so on. If you'd like him or allow him to, he could probably help shed a little bit of light, no pun intended, on some of those questions.
Counsel, is that acceptable?
Well, it might open it up for additional testimony if we have new testimony coming in, so that's, you know, it's fine if you need the explanation. If not, if there's new information, then anyone else would have a right to comment on the new information.
I just can't answer some of the questions about LED versus high-pressure sodium or lights on Pole Line not working. I, I can't answer that, but I know Dan can, so.
Want further clarification, or are you fine with where we're at?
Just a quick, is, are those, this new kind of light, is that the only one that's available?
Those are the only two lights that are currently offered by Kootenay Electric that meet the city of Post Falls lighting policy.
Correct.
Good to go, then. That's what we've heard.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're good to go.
Okay. So just for clarification again, we're not asking to change any of the existing lights we're talking about from this point forward. And I think Bill kind of addressed that when it relates to the park, so. And John clarified, Columbia Bank does own a certain portion of the future project. So does Copper Basin. Obviously, I represent both of them, so I think that clears that up. And I really don't have anything else to add that we haven't discussed already.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
John, any other comments from, for staff?
No, I don't have anything more to add.
Any questions for John at this point? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to the Commission for discussion. Vicki.
I think I've got my questions answered. Thank you.
Ryan?
I appreciate all the testimony, and yeah, I think I know where I'm at.
Okay. Nancy?
Hi. I, one of, one of the questions that I had, just in, in talking things over with staff before, when we, when I looked over the, the meeting, was, does everyone in the city pay for streetlights? And, and I was answering. And, and I was answered, the answer was yes. On our, on our city utilities bill, where our bill for water, sewer, garbage is a, is a charge for streetlights. And so everyone pays for streetlights under that. So it doesn't concern me that the city would be taking over, paying for the maintenance and use of those streetlights, paying Kootenay Electric or Avista. I'm, I actually thought that the association would appreciate not having, not having to bear the cost of that, as that can be, can be expensive, I'm sure. So I was surprised that they, that there were actually homeowners that felt like that they wanted to continue to maintain that, have that burden, or what I would consider a burden. Other than that, I think I know where I'm at on it. Those were just some things that I wanted to say.
Well, I personally think it makes sense. We have to do something. What's there currently is no longer available, so the decision has to be made, and it sounds like they've worked, the developers have worked with the city staff to come up to logical solutions, so I'm good to go. So I'll look for a motion.
I would, in regard to the preliminary PUD, I would move to recommend approval of two more preliminary PUD amendments, street lighting PA-14-03, and recommend adoption of the finding conclusion and condition contained in the staff report.
Okay, second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Kelly, could I have a roll call, please?
Orders?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ampe?
Aye.
Kimball?
Epstein.
All right.
Bush and Carrie?
Okay, any new business, John? No new business? Staff comments? None? Commission comments? Anybody have anything for the good of the order?
Sure, just public service messages for everybody out there, a little bit germinated to the conversation just prior. Streetlights, so each individual streetlight owned by Kootenay Electric or Avista, typically they have on them a label or a tag that has a number on it, and that number is usually unique to each streetlight. And so, and it also tells you who the streetlight is owned by, so it's either owned by Avista or Kootenay Electric. And so if it is not functioning correctly, you can call the customer service lines at either Kootenay Electric or Avista, depending on who owns the streetlight, and have them come out and fix the streetlight. So you don't have to watch it flicker annoyingly all year. So that's all I've got to say.
Where is that? Where is it on the post? Is it eye level or way up?
It's, it should be eye level.
Any other comments? Okay, just a reminder for everyone on the commission that next month will be election time for officers. Keep that in the back of your mind.
Do you have pins that you want to hand out?
No. All right, hearing nothing else, Bill?
Just, just real quick, we didn't have it on the agenda. The city of Post Falls is going through and updating our transportation master plan. The last one was done in 2004. We think that the economy and growth has kind of stabilized. On the 27th of this month, we're having an open house. It'll be in Rotunda here at City Hall, beginning at 11 o'clock till around 7 o'clock that night, that evening. And so we're just, I'm just encouraging the commission members to come in and provide comments. Comments will also be available on the website during that period, too. So I'm just making that announcement for you. It's a very important plan that, that we're, that we're updating now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, I need a motion. So moved. Will be adjourned.